Good afternoon, everyone. This is the public hearing, a public reading of the Committee of the Whole regarding Bill and Resolutions. Bills and Resolutions numbers 240487, 240552, 240168, 240505, 240179, 240180, 240181, 240182, 240193, and 240492. Ms. Lawrie, will you please call the roll to take attendance?
Councilmember Squilla.
President.
Councilmember Gautier. Councilmember Jones.
President.
Councilmember Young.
President.
Councilmember Driscoll.
President.
Councilmember Lazada.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bass.
President.
Councilmember Phillips.
President.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
President.
Councilmember Thomas.
President.
Councilmember Harity.
President.
Councilmember Ahmad.
President.
Councilmember Landau.
President.
Councilmember Brooks.
President.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
President.
Council President Johnson.
Present. Thank you. A quorum of the committee is present, and this hearing is now called to order. Ms. Lawrie, will you please read the title of the Bills and Resolutions?
240487, Resolution Appointing Carrie Fuehler Bender to the Board of the Directors of the Old City Special Services District. 240552, Resolution Appointing Brianna Wilkins to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services District. 240168, Resolution Appointing Madison McCarron to the Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District of Philadelphia and Lower Marion. 240505, Resolution Appointing Mark Jenkins to the Board of Directors of City Avenue Special Services District of Philadelphia at Lower Marion, which is being held. 240179, An Ordnance Adopting the Operating Budget for Fiscal Year 2025. 240180, An Ordnance Amending Chapter 191800 of the Philadelphia Code Entitled "School Tax Authorization" to Provide for an Increase in the Tax of the Board of Education. The School District of Philadelphia is authorized to impose on real estate and amending Chapter 191300 entitled "Real Estate Taxes" to establish an equivalent reduction in the tax rate for the city real estate tax and making technical changes, all under certain terms and conditions. 240181, An Ordnance to Adopt a Fiscal 2025 Capital Budget. 240182, An Ordnance to Adopt a Capital Program for the Six Fiscal Years 2025 through 2030 Inclusive. 240193, Resolution Providing for the Approval by the Council of the City of Philadelphia of a Revised Five-Year Financial Plan for the City of Philadelphia Covering Fiscal Years 2025 through 2029 and Incorporating Revisions with Respect to Fiscal Year 2024, which is to be submitted by the Mayor to the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Authority pursuant to an Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement by and between the city and authority, which is being held. 240492, An Ordnance Amending Section 191301.1 of the Philadelphia Code Entitled "Homestead Exclusion" to Increase the Amount of the Homestead Exclusion Under Certain Terms and Conditions.
Ms. Lawrie, will you please call the first witness to testify on the Old City Special Services Resolutions, number 240487 and 240552?
Job Itzkowitz, Executive Director, Old City District.
Good afternoon, Job. Just state your name and title for the record, and please begin your testimony.
Good afternoon, Council President Johnson and all members of council. My name is Job Itzkowitz. I'm the Executive Director of the Old City Special Services District. I know what time of day it is. I know what time of year it is. I've submitted my testimony in writing. Everyone should have a copy, and I'm happy to rely on that testimony if you prefer and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Are there any questions or comments from members of the committee? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are any other witnesses to testify on Resolutions Number 240487 or 240552? Ms. Lawrie, are there any other witnesses to testify on the City Avenue Special Services Resolution Number 240168?
No other.
Hearing none. Ms. Lawrie, will you please call the first witness to testify on budget bills, number 240179, 240180, 240181, 240182, and 240492?
First person to testify is John McClaney.
What's his name?
Who was it?
John McClaney?
John McClaney.
How you doing, John? Just state your name and your title for the record.
John McClaney. Excuse me. My name is John McClaney. Of course. Of course, I just lost everything right quick. Give me a moment, please. Thank you. Thank you, sir. My name is John McClaney, and I'm the proud owner of Yestir, Multi-Purpose Improvement Specialist. We specialize in interior architecture and design and general construction, located here in Philadelphia. I'm here today to advocate for the continued reduction of the business income to and receipts tax, BIRT, and wage taxes, which unfortunately are not included in the FY25 budget. As a minority-owned business navigating the economic landscape in Philadelphia has been both rewarding and challenging. Philadelphia has made strides in fostering a more inclusive business environment, but we still face significant obstacles. The recent reductions of BIRT, or wage taxes, have been a small but critical lifeline for many of us. The continued reductions in business taxes would enable businesses like mine to invest in our communities, create jobs, and contribute to the local economy. Continued reductions in business taxes create goodwill and build trust within the small business community. The current business's climate for minority-owned businesses in Philadelphia is one of resilience and determination. However, we often operate with thin margins and less access to capital compared to our counterparts. High taxes exacerbate the challenges, making it harder to grow and sustain our businesses. Lowering the BRT and wage taxes helps level the playing field, allowing us to reinvest savings into our businesses and workforce. Moreover, a thriving small business sector is essential for the vitality of our neighborhoods. Minority-owned businesses not only provide goods and services, but also serve as a cultural and social hub that strengthens the fabric of our communities. Okay? By continuing to reduce these taxes, we can support the growth of minority-owned businesses, foster job creation, stimulate economic growth, activity in areas that need it the most. I urge City Council to reconsider the FY25 budget to include further reductions in BRT and wage taxes. These measures are not just financially a relief, they're also an investment in the future of our city. Let's continue to build a Philadelphia where all businesses, regardless of size, ownership, have the opportunity to thrive. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from members of the committee? Thank you very much for your testimony. Ms. Lawrie, will you please call the next person for public testimony?
Gabriela Paez.
Just state your name and your title for the record, and please begin your testimony.
My name is Gabriela Gabriel Paez.
Thank you. Please begin.
Good afternoon, everyone, and members of the City Council. I am, again, my name is Gabriela Gabriel Paez. I am the owner and founder of BR, Hardscape and Landscape Design, and here speaking on behalf of small business owners in Philadelphia. I extend my gratitude for the chance to share my views on the 2025 budget, fiscal year budget, and I commend the diligent efforts of City Council in crafting this budget. Regardably, I must express my profound disappointment in this budget as a committed entrepreneur deeply invested in both my business and the future of Philadelphia. My disappointment stems from the absence of a reduction in the city's business income and receipts tax, BIRT. When we started our business in 2021, we knew we had to pay taxes, and we were expecting it. We just didn't know how bad it was going to be. So, this tax, to start with, represents a double taxation on businesses, which was a surprise to me when we started our business. That means that we get taxed whether or not we make profits during the year. This burden weighs even heavier on minority-owned enterprises, which often lack historical access to sufficient capital. And if you take businesses like our business, which is a seasonal landscape, hardscape, and masonry company, starting the year with a large tax bill is not fun. A reduction in this tax will empower businesses that are growing to reinvesting funds back into operations, be it through machinery and equipment, expanding their footprints, or increasing the marketing efforts. And also, it will allow us to hire more people, which, of course, will help the city and also increase the taxes going into the system. By holding the previous pattern of reducing the BIRT and wage taxes, we have regarably squandered an opportunity to ease the financial strain faced by small business owners like me. We have missed an opportunity to create goodwill and trust with entrepreneurs who want to create more job opportunities and offer sustainable livelihoods for the residents of Philadelphia. Looking forward, I remain resolute in my commitment to advocating for a more inclusive Philadelphia, and I ask for your support in a reduction of taxes. From the city, to instill greater certainty and confidence among entrepreneurs like me as we endeavor to establish or expand our ventures. The essence of the matter is undeniable. Eliminating this double tax will not only benefit me as a small business owner, but also numerous others like me, enabling us to grow and create employment opportunities in Philadelphia. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from members of the committee? Hearing none. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, Ms. Lawrie, will you please call the next person for public testimony?
Jennifer Rodriguez.
Just state your name and title for the record, beginning your testimony.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, distinguished members of City Council. My name is Jennifer Rodriguez. I am president of the Greater Philadelphia Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. I am here today on behalf of diverse chambers coalition of Philadelphia, which is a collaboration of the African-American Chamber of Commerce for Pennsylvania, New Jersey, and Delaware, the Asian-American Chamber of Commerce for Greater Philadelphia, the Independence Business Alliance, which is the LGBTQ+ Chamber, and of course, the Greater Philadelphia Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. Today, we advocate for the continued reduction of the BIRT and wage taxes. It is with great concern that I stand before you, as the prospect of not reducing these taxes for a third consecutive year looms large. Study after study and report after report have consistently concluded that Philadelphia's business taxes are among the highest in the nation. In fact, as it relates to taxes specifically, Philadelphia ranks 76 out of 83 American cities in the most recent Arizona State University Ease of Doing Business Index. These high taxes significantly hinder our city's potential for business creation and growth, particularly in communities of color. For years, when compared with its peers, Philadelphia has underperformed in fostering a vibrant business environment. This is especially true for small business owners like those who are represented by our chambers of commerce. The pandemic may be behind us, but its effects are still felt. The city's recovery has been uneven, factually leaving one-third of Hispanic residents in poverty, according to Pew's State of the City Report. Small business owners face ongoing challenges such as high inflation, rising interest rates, and a competitive labor market. Despite these obstacles, they continue to persevere, but their efforts are often overshadowed by the burden of high taxes, crime, and city bureaucracy. The good news about the economy often masks the reality that small business owners are facing an increasingly challenging business environment. Most small businesses polled by the diverse chambers of commerce have indicated that they would not recommend the City of Philadelphia as a place in which to do business to other entrepreneurs, earning the city a net promoter score of negative 41 out of a maximum of 100 points. This sentiment underscores the urgency of our plea. To support our small businesses, City Council must continue to lower the BIRT and wage taxes. BIRT especially is a burden that businesses must bear regardless of profitability, and reducing or eliminating it would provide significant relief. Similarly, reducing the wage tax will enable businesses to hire more employees and expand more rapidly. These incremental reductions sustained over time will have a substantial positive impact. They will ease the cost and burden of doing business for entrepreneurs, particularly those in our diverse communities who bring vitality and local dollars to our neighborhoods, which will enable them to grow and expand opportunities for all residents. After enduring years of hardship, there are actionable steps within your power that can ease the burden of doing business in Philadelphia. We urge you to support the continued reduction of BIRT and wage taxes to help our small businesses thrive in these challenging times. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Any questions or comments from members of the committee? Hearing Ms. Lawrie, could you please call the person for public testimony? The next person, please.
Will Carter.
Mr. Carter, just state your name and title for the record. Please begin your testimony.
Certainly. Good evening. William Carter, Vice President of Local Government Affairs for the Chamber of Commerce and co-founder of the Inclusive Growth Coalition, or IGC. Thank you, Council President Johnson, members of council and staff, for all the work that you all do. As you all know, I used to work in this body, so I know it's a whole lot going on at this time, and we appreciate your attention and consideration of our request. I speak because this is what I'm about. In 2007, I co-wrote the legislation that requires economic opportunity plans on all city contracts, and I advocated for that when I worked for, at that point, Councilman Darrell Clark. Both of my grandfathers were entrepreneurs. My grandfather on my dad's side was the first licensed black master plumber in the history of Richmond, Virginia, and my grandfather on my mother's side built homes in rural Virginia. Although my grandfather on my dad's side was from Philadelphia, he moved to Virginia for more opportunity. They were by no means rich men. Both of them made a decent living, but they just are people who chose to work for themselves. People like them, I certainly believe, and others should be considered just as any other person who works for someone else. They are no less working families because they decided to work for themselves. In fact, they are working so hard that they are creating work for others. That's what they're doing. That's what happens when they grow. They hire. That's why you see "help wanted" signs out here. No one hires just to hire. They hire because they need help, because they're growing. And we figure that that is really an prudent investment for the city to invest in those who are growing and then will in turn hire residents from the City of Philadelphia. Matter of fact, it's one of the best investments that the city can make, investing in those who will create more work. So although there were no new investments this year, we appreciate the investments made over the past couple of years, and we also appreciate Council President and Council for forming the Tax Reform Commission, and we look forward to those recommendations coming from the Tax Reform Commission, and look forward to more investments in those who work for themselves and those who work for others in an environment that includes a large and small business ecosystem that grows businesses and jobs inclusively. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from members of the committee? Well, Ms. Lawrie, would you please call the next person for public testimony?
Blaine Stoddard.
Mr. Stoddard, just state your name and your title for the record, and begin your testimony.
My name is Blaine Stoddard. I hope there's not an echo in here. Sounds like there may be. I'm going to try to level my voice so you can hear every word I say. My name is Blaine Stoddard. I run BFW Group. BFW Group is a project construction, project management company at the Navy Yard. I can just go ahead? Okay, great.
Please begin your testimony, sir.
Thank you. To the Council President and the honorable members of City Council, like I stated, my name is Blaine Stoddard, and I am the President and CEO of BFW Construction Project Managers. I am also a small business advocate and job creator in the City of Philadelphia. I want to thank this body for the opportunity to provide testimony on the city's fiscal year 25 budget. I want to acknowledge the significant work that you have done, along with all the committees I read about every day that are meeting day and night, devoted to the passage of this 2025 budget. We started out with two employees several years ago, 2015. Before that, I had none for the prior three years, except me. Today, we employ 30 people at the Navy Yard with salaries ranging from $60,000 to $150,000 plus bonus, depending on their role and title. The $150,000, Mr. President, does not include benefits, so it's $150,000 plus benefits. We're a company that you talk about in these hallowed halls when it comes to a living wage, because we pay a living wage. However, for us to thrive and grow, we need a city that is business-friendly, a city that is competitive like Ballackinwood and can compete with places like Ballackinwood, Camden, and King of Prussia. We need a city that will attract more Comcast and Lincoln Financials and not drive them out of the city. Less people and jobs in the city leads to more crime, and if you look down while you're walking, more trash, filth, and doo-doo, like I saw when I was walking on 12th Street. I was walking almost like jaywalking, avoiding the doo-doo. The thesis, the thesis, I'm so sorry, Mr. President, if I use improper words. The city is at a critical stage, where we need to do things that move our city forward to compete in the region and nation. We must reduce the wage and business and receipts tax, which is a double tax that business owners like me must pay, whether we make a profit or not. We must reduce taxes so that businesses will have an incentive to move here, to grow here, and to thrive here. By halting what has been a regular reduction in the BIRT, and again, please forgive me, Mr. President, and honorable City Council people, if I make a mistake, I'm just telling you what I read in the paper. By halting what has been a regular reduction in the BIRT and the wage tax, we have missed an opportunity to alleviate a burden on small businesses and business owners like me. We have missed an opportunity in the 2025 budget to help entrepreneurs hire more employees and provide more family-sustaining jobs so Philadelphians can remain in Philadelphia and thrive in Philadelphia. We missed an opportunity to reduce the cycle of poverty and cultivate a stronger society and a striving economy. I urge you, at this late stage in the game, to amend the budget to include even a minimal, diminutous, de minimis reduction in the wage and BIRT tax. It will send a clear message, even if it's a small reduction, that Philadelphia is open for business. I want to thank you again. Again, I've been around for 30 years, Mr. President, and for the first time in City Council, I do not know most of the City Council members. So I want to thank you for giving me this opportunity, finally, finally. We must be business-friendly, because being business-friendly puts more money in the general fund. And if we don't put money in the general fund, we will not have money to address the homeless crisis, which I know this august body supports the homeless, to support the affordable housing crisis, which, again, I've read that this body really supports affordable housing, to support job training, and to support the alleviation of poverty. I am praying and hoping, Mr. President, that somebody asks me a question. Thank you, and may God bless you.
I have a question.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from members of the committee? Chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips.
You know, it's interesting. I was, you know, holding off on questions, but since he asked for it, I'm going to give it. Just a quick question. I'm curious about this, because, you know, the business community is a lifeline of our city, and all of us in City Council are very much aware of that. That's why I'm very excited about what Council President has proposed, where us to look and to having the Task Reform Commission help us understand what we can do to make this a better tax season for not only just the business community, but also for our residents. So the question I just had for you has a lot to do with the fact that, I'm just out of curiosity, you're a business owner. BIRT tax, wage tax, do you have a rough estimate on how much money you're losing as a result of these taxes that you, you know, compared to, like, how much of a deficit is it for you? And I kind of wanted to ask the other folks that, but I didn't get a chance, but I'll ask you today.
Again, I may not be able to answer this in an objective manner, but I'm going to give you real numbers that I see from my accountant. My taxes in Philadelphia is well over $100,000 as a small business. Now, again, I'm paying big wages. That does not include the wage tax, just my net income tax, my BIRT tax, whatever. It's in the $50,000 to $100,000 range now, and that's a broad streak. I have an office in Harrisburg, and if they charge me $100 in taxes, I don't know what to say. I have an office in Lower Marion at my house. They probably charge me, it's de minimis. It's so small, I don't even notice. And so, my point is this, and I thank you for forming the Tax Reform Commission?
Yes.
Right. Businesses don't get considered in the budget. It's like we're not considered. And what I'm saying to you is, I agree with you that businesses must be considered in every budget, and it's not, we're like an after, we feel that we're an afterthought. And you're right, we are the light. Whatever money you're spending, a lot of it, if not most of it, comes from real estate taxes and the business community. And I want this body to start considering in your yearly budget, hi, Councilman, in your yearly budget, how you can help the business community, because all these programs that are in the budget, that money comes from us!
Thank you, Councilperson.
Any other questions or comments from members of the committee?
Council Press.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Young.
I have a question. I mean, it's unrelated to anything you testified on, but you asked for questions, and so I'm just going to stick to my, stick to me being me. Are you able to tell us your scope of work on 2100 Dryard Avenue?
I'm going to defer to, I'm going to defer to the Department of Public Property and the, and the Mayor for that question, because...
Thank you.
Councilman Jeff, I call him Councilman Jeff. Councilman Jeff, I'm in trouble either way.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
And so I will defer, defer to them.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from members of this robust body? The Chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Bass, then Councilmember Isaiah Thomas. Then Councilmember Curtis Jones.
Well, I just, I just want...
Councilmember Bass?
All right, I, I want to redirect, Mr. President. I want to redirect and just say that many moons ago, I was an employee of Blaine Stoddard's. I know of his commitment to Philadelphia. I know that he could have easily have packed up his business and gone over to Lower Marion with his business as well. He's made a commitment to the city of Philadelphia, and he's done probably more to hire or to make sure that African-American developers and, and professionals have opportunities to work on development projects here in the city of Philadelphia. And anybody who's been around Blaine for five minutes knows that that's accurate, absolutely accurate and true. So I don't know about Girard Avenue, but I just, but I just want to thank you for the work that you've done in West, in West Philadelphia and throughout the entire city of Philadelphia. When I worked with Blaine, it was at the West Philadelphia Partnership CDC and did an outstanding job. And so I just wanted to say, you know, keep up the good work in terms of making sure that minorities have an opportunity to participate in these very important projects that are happening in communities throughout the city. So, thank you for your work.
Count, responding directly to Councilwoman Bass, we promote for free over 200 black and, 250 black and brown contractors to get work in construction and in professional services related to construction. And one of the reasons why we're not rich, Council President, is because I spend most of my time advocating instead of trying to build my business.
Thank you, Mr. Stoddard. And also, just provide the Chair a copy of that list of those 250 professional services companies and contractors so we can utilize as we make sure that we're equitably focusing on economic development in the city of Philadelphia. So I'll follow up with you on that. Is that okay?
I will send that list to you tonight, sir.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Isaiah Thomas, then Councilmember Curtis Jones.
Council President, I know we don't have too many more people to testify, so I just wanted to, first and foremost, say thank you for your leadership, and I wanted to also thank everybody who came in today to specifically testify and advocate for some of the tax cuts that we heard folks talking about the importance of. I'm proud to be the sponsor of the legislation that has essentially cut the taxes the last couple of years, but it's no secret that there is no bill this year to essentially look at tax cuts. I do want to be clear. We do not want the business, the community, to feel like Philadelphia is not open for business. We very much are open for business. Like a lot of the testimony that we heard today, the tax cuts that we have made have been small, to say the least. And at the end of the day, we recognize that those cuts do not provide the lifeline that a lot of our black and brown businesses need. I think about our restaurants, so many restaurants that's closed over the last couple of years since the pandemic, our barber shops, our beauty salons, our, so many different type of companies across the city of Philadelphia who's struggling right now, and we get that advocacy and we hear it all the time. I want to be clear. Myself and some other, I can't speak for all of Council, but myself and other members of Council, we still have that appetite. We still want people to know that Philadelphia is open for business, but we want to approach this in a comprehensive way that puts us in a position to be able to have a holistic solution. And I think right now, we're not quite yet at that place, but I do trust our Council President, the Council Leadership, and the legislators who are here to be able to get this right in collaboration of working with the Mayor. So while we may not been able to get that bite at the apple that we might necessarily feel like we need, we do anticipate a systemic solution to a structural problem that has made our suburbs financially beneficial, right? It's no secret, most people in this legislative body knows that my cousin is the Mayor of Camden, and we talk often about some of the legislative things they have going on, and actually, some of the advantages they have based on legislation that we've introduced that limit, limits people's opportunity to propel and excel in certain business atmospheres. So, Council President, I just wanted to put that information on the record because I think it's very important, and I think it's also, again, important that people recognize that Philadelphia is open for business. This legislative body is open to dialogue, but we want to put ourselves in a position to have sustainable solution, solutions. I think we've had Band-Aid messaging so far, and I'm proud of every Band-Aid and every message that have gone out there, but I think we're ready to move into a more robust place and come up with a systemic solution that can really put us in a position to address this problem over the long haul. So thank you, Council President, and more importantly, thank you to everybody who came out to advocate for this important issue, because at the end of the day, we know that it's not easy to spend a lot of time down here with us, but this is how government works, and when you do it, it matters. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to take this opportunity to say, for the record, Blaine started, started this. We were all going to be quiet, but you inspired us to speak our mind. Thank you for that. I wanted to go on the record and thank Will Carter. The diminimus tax cuts that you have received is your fault. You came in here and educated all of us as to the importance of not having of this against that being for the alleviation of poverty, you can also be for the development of businesses. And you took your time, led a cohort of diverse chambers to convince us and through your legislation, get it passed. And I would say to you that when you come into these chambers, know that there are people that are, they're pro-people, but they're also pro-business. Pro-people, because businesses are people too. And we make that, and we don't, we don't have floor fights out here about that, but we have those discussions in a meaningful way thanks to the information you guys provide every day. So to my colleague's point, you might not have got it this time, but there'll be a next time up at bat. And we have to juxtapose that with some of the other priorities that we have to, like you say, pay for. Mayor Parker, to her credit, in her budget deliberation, showed us that the vast majority of our tax revenues don't come from real estate, as most people believe. Disproportionately, it's on the backs of small businesses like yours. And what we also understand is that we have to fight for the person that invests their time, their treasury into a small business. They are the most courageous people that I know. Because it's one thing to go work for IBM, get a gold watch, your paycheck comes every two weeks predictably. It is another thing to have to balance a, a, a ledger and be able to pay your employees first, and then pay us second. It is a difficult, courageous task. And what I like about your generation, Mr. Carter, being an alumni from here, is that they're some of the most courageous people I've ever met. We were taught, in my generation, being the second, the senior member on deck here today, we were taught, go to work for someone else, work 20 years, make them rich, and then retire. You were taught to believe in yourself, to put your mouth where your treasury is and eke a living out of the city, in the city of Philadelphia. But for the record, every step of the way, you ain't just meet me. I'm a founding member of the African-American Chamber of Commerce, advocating for small business. I am the former Director of the Minority Business Enterprise Council. Think our tenure under Wilson Good, we held a record of $387 million to minority businesses, yet to be achieved since. We are a part of that vote that reduced taxes. We care about small businesses in this chamber too. So, we appreciate your testimony today, but our leadership is, is often open to consider those kinds of factors, and there's a budget every, every year. And we hope to be a little more attentive to the needs of small businesses. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Will the clerk please call the last person for public comment?
Yes, we have Brian Fenstermaker, and they're testifying on Resolution Number 240487 and 240552.
Before you begin, Brian, I also just want to, Mr. Carter and Mr. Stoddard, also just echo the sentiments of my colleague before we wrap up. We did, we, the purpose of us putting together a Tax Reform Commission is so we can look at things comprehensively. And I know when you talk about doing cuts, it sends a business signal, but when you're talking about small businesses getting a tax cut of $80, right? And something is better than nothing, right? We had discussions on how could we get this comprehensively and move beyond just symbolic gestures of us being open for business. We also have a special committee on diversity, equity, inclusion, right? Because we all know often two times that black and brown and women-owned businesses don't even have a seat at the table, right? They always have to come in as a sub and not be the prime. And so I just want to echo the sentiments of everything that my colleagues talked about, because yes, we do support small businesses, and even with the diversity, equity, inclusion task force, it's an effort for us to break down all obstacles and that barriers that has preventing us from developing generational wealth. We're the number one big city when it comes to poverty, but yet I see development taking place all throughout the city of Philadelphia. And so, there's a lot of different ways in terms of how we can make sure we're supporting particularly black and brown small businesses. And one of the key ways is, I know I have a track record as a second District Councilperson that any major development project that comes to the second Council district, we do a 50% minority participation requirement, not just on construction, but also professional services, as well as procurement. Who's getting the lawyer work? Who's getting the architect work? Who's getting the cleaning contract? Who's getting the public relations contract? And so, as a body, we, we try to take a comprehensive approach in making sure we're supporting our black and brown businesses. But we definitely hear you. We thank you for taking time out of your schedule and being here today, and so keep up the good work as well. Thank you. You can begin your testimony, sir. Just state your, your name and your title for the record.
Sure. Good afternoon. My name is Brian Fenstermaker. I am the President and CEO of City Avenue Special Services District of Philadelphia and Lower Marion. Good afternoon, President Johnson and Councilmembers. I'm here today to offer my support for Resolution 240168, Appointing Madison McCarron to the City Ave District Board of Directors. Just as some background, City Ave District is a dual municipality municipal authority operating on both sides of City Avenue. Our board is made up of nine directors, Philadelphia side and nine on the Lower Marion side. We're a 2.7-mile-long corridor from 63rd Street to the Schuylkill Expressway. Our budget annually funds bike patrol and safety, cleaning improvements, capital improvements, and we've raised over $16 million since our inception to do capital projects. Most recently, the reconnection of Presidential Boulevard on the one, the side of Target along Monument Road. We're currently working on a retail strategy and implementation plan. And today, we just held a groundbreaking for six-floor mixed-use redevelopment project. Madison, back to the testimony. Madison McCarron is a dynamic portfolio manager in real estate and represents Rose Valley Management and oversees the financial performance and operations of a multifamily portfolio of assets, including the mansion at Balla, which is on the city Philadelphia side of the district. Madison previously held a position as General Manager of MAC Property Management, which is the owners of Presidential City, which is over 1,000 units within the city, fourth district. She contributes to the successful acquisition and operation of Class A portfolio valued in excess of $80 million and has worked in a number of different apartment, military, family use projects within the district as well. She would be, she's bringing her expertise and leadership, vendor partnerships, and strategic asset management to our district and aligning her professional endeavors with the continued success of City Ave District. Thank you for time, and I'm happy to answer any additional questions on the nomination.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from members of the committee? The Chair recognizes Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Well, I just wanted to thank you, Council President. I just wanted to thank you for the conversation we had relative to the City Avenue Special Services District and want to thank my district member, Councilmember Jones, for always working with us in the community and for the new trash receptacles that are out, the blue trash receptacles that are out on City Avenue. And just wanted to put on the record that more are coming to the Philadelphia side of the street. In addition to that, I understand that today you all had the groundbreaking for the Ballackinwood Shopping Center, the area on Lorton Taylor's. And even though that's on the City Avenue side, it's an important shopping corridor to folks who live on, on the city side. And so I congratulate you all on that as well. And finally, wanted to just put on the record that I'm appreciative of the work that you all have done with WRA and the 52nd Ward RCO, Mr. Steve, Steve Jones, relative to the proposed sort of restaurant in between Brymart Avenue and 51st on City Avenue. And I look forward to the continued work you'll do with the community. So I just wanted to say thank you for the willingness to speak with us and work with us and work with the property owners relative to everything that's happening on the corridor. And I just wanted to thank Councilmember Jones for all of his help with that. Thank you very, very much.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from members of the committee? Thank you. Hearing none. There being no further questions from members of the committee and no other witnesses on the list to testify, we'll ask if there's anyone else present in this hearing who wishes to offer testimony on bills and resolutions, 240487, 240552, 240168, 240179, 240180, 240181, 240182, and 240492. Hearing none, I wanted to thank all the witnesses for their participation today. We definitely value your opinion. We will now go into our public meeting to consider the action to be taken on bills and resolution numbers, 240487, 240552, 240168, 240179, 240180, 240181, 240182, and 240492. Ms. Lawhead, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Squilla. Councilmember Gautier. Councilmember Driscoll. Councilmember Lozada. Councilmember Bass. Councilmember Phillips. Councilmember O'Neil. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson. Councilmember Thomas. Councilmember Jones. Councilmember Young. Councilmember Harity. Councilmember Ahmad. Councilmember Landau. Councilmember Brooks. Councilmember Awark. Council President Johnson.
Present. The Chair recognizes Isaiah Thomas as being present. Before we continue to take action on the bills and resolutions, this committee will be in recess. We will take a brief recess until 8 o'clock. Thank you very much. I'll see y'all back. I'm sorry, that's 8:00 PM this evening. We working. 8:00 PM this evening. And for the record, everyone, that's 8:00 PM this evening. The Chair recognizes Councilman Ketsley Lozada as being present. She's present. She's present.